Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please. Speaker thirty-six, Greg Goodman, followed by Speaker thirty-seven, Rosemary Vega, and then Speaker number three, Jennifer Biggs, and then Speaker five, Stacy Babbage, followed by Speaker twenty-one, Maria George Akos, please.
Hello. Authentic assessments are an incredibly valuable tool for enhancing the quality of both learning and teaching. Unfortunately, standardized tests, which have come to play an increasingly dominant role throughout our education system, are the very opposite of meaningful assessments and threaten to undermine what over a century of reflective educational inquiry has taught us to be at the very core of the learning and teaching process. Two minutes isn't enough time to talk meaningfully consider how standardized tests reward and indeed encourage shallow, superficial thinking characterized by concentration on isolated skills devoid of context, memorization, the avoidance of challenges and difficult tasks, and a prioritization of speed and elimination through guesswork strategies at the expense of more actively engaged thinking characterized by exploration, the asking of questions, the articulation of new problems and novel solutions, and the making of meaningful, context-rich connections. It isn't enough time to talk seriously about how the high stakes associated with these tests degrade classroom quality by driving teachers to adopt safe, shallow, heavily scripted and test-centered rather than student-centered curriculums. It certainly isn't enough time to talk about how standardized tests eliminate intrinsic motivations to learn, how they waste scarce money and valuable class time, or how and why the results of these tests are of a thoroughly questionable validity. I welcome the opportunity to discuss all these things with you more at greater length. Some of the time, y'all have my contact information. That would be great. Instead, let me conclude my remarks by summarizing my point. Standardized tests hurt kids, hurt schools, and hurt education. Over the last month, parents and teachers across CPS have begun to stand up and embrace this simple truth: hurts kids, not gonna do it. Disappointingly, CPS has responded with a combination of Orwellian fear tactics and finger pointing, shifting blame and responsibility to Springfield and Washington, D.C. This is unacceptable. For better or worse, you are the leaders of this school system. You have the same mandate as your teachers to in all situations do what is best for your students. Standardized tests aren't good for education policy. They're a political agenda tied to a network of profit motives, and they hurt kids. Stop defending them, stop excusing them, stop placing the blame somewhere else. Do not penalize students, do not penalize parents, do not penalize the teachers risking their jobs by doing the right thing.
Thank you, Mr. Goodman. Our next speaker, please.
Show your students and parents and teachers that you deserve to be the leaders of this school system.
By standing with them and standing up against destructive, ad-controlled policy of other schools.
Our next speaker, please, will be Rosemary Vega.
Raise the mantra, say it to Springfield, say it to Washington, D.C., hurts kids, not gonna do it.
Last call for Rosemary Vega. Moving on to Speaker number three, please, Jennifer Biggs.
Good morning. Jenny Biggs from Raise Your Hand. We need you to foster partnerships with parents and communities. Thank you for voting today to amend the volunteer policy. This change is needed for our schools to thrive. We need you to create a positive climate for our school communities. With the recent ISAT interrogations at both Drummond and Salsedo, trust between parents and CPS has eroded yet again, and a climate of intimidation exists. Parents across the city, both those who opted out and those who didn't, are horrified and feel completely disrespected. My husband and I opted our two oldest children out of the ISAT. On Friday morning, I had to coach my kids about what to do if they were pulled out of class and taken to a room with a CPS employee to be questioned. "Don't say a word. Tell them you won't talk without your mom or dad in the room." I likened it to being interrogated by the police. "Don't say a word. Ask for a lawyer." Those are your rights, I said to my children. Angry, heartbroken, sad, this is how I felt. My twelve-year-old was outraged that students were removed from class. "Isn't it their job to educate us? Why would they take kids away from learning for that?" she asked. We need you to build a district with collaboration. A video of professional development occurring at an OS four school went viral. Watching it, I thought, these teachers must be highly insulted. Raise Your Hand started hearing from parents at OS four schools. Huge budget cuts, PD outsourced to consultants from California and the U.K., no resource classes? The Office of Strategic Supports, which oversees the OS four schools, received a budget increase of thirteen million dollars this year. Where exactly is this money going? While we agree schools that need it most should get more resources, those resources should be used well. Also, the best PD comes from teachers for teachers. Why outsource when the best source?
Ms. Biggs, excuse me. Thank you.
When the best source is right in the school. We need you to make wise financial decisions. The future of our children and the future of our city depends on you increasing the per pupil funding level and redirecting resources to teaching and learning. One last thing, I do have an invitation for you from Raise Your Hand. We were able to get Pazie Solberg to come and speak, and I have invitations for all the board members. We'd love to see you there. Equality education for every child, how do we get there? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next?
Well, thanks for your patience. There's usually a little bit more notice than that, but my name is Arnie Steiber. I'm a father, grandfather, retired businessperson with an MBA, and an infantry veteran from the U.S. War against the people in Vietnam. I'm here today to speak to you about teaching violence to our children. When the cry is send in the Marines, there's no expectation of dialogue. When the soldier's creed has words like, "I am a warrior, and I stand ready to deploy, engage, and destroy the enemy in close combat," there is no expectation that the engagement will be friendly. The military is trained to resolve conflict with violence. The military teaches violence. CPS is the most militarized public school system in the country with over nine thousand children receiving military training in some form. Your current actions like the proposed militarization of Ames Middle School and your long-range plans of future militarization send the message that CPS supports violence. Violence can be made to look glorious and patriotic. Dress it in a uniform, display it proudly with a flag flying, but it's still violence. As mature military veterans, we fully understand the culture of violence in this country, from slavery, the virtual mass extermination of Native Americans, the violence against those deemed different, domestic violence, violence against women, police violence, gang violence, economic violence, and the list goes on.
Mr. Steiber, excuse me. Can you please conclude?
At the core of all, yes, I sure will. At the core of all this violence is, we believe, the military model of conflict resolution. You have the opportunity right here to show the people of Chicago, this state, this nation, and the world that violence is not the answer.
Thank you, Mr. Steiber.
Your decisions can be a beacon of hope or more of the same. We implore you to...
Our next speaker, please. Thank you.
Hello. I'm Emily Fong, Suter parent and Revis LSC community rep. I'm thankful for the Montessori option, a proven style of instruction for all types of children. I am encouraged CPS chose to invest in this approach and feel it demonstrates interest somewhere in the district to continue to implement research-based methodologies. I am also grateful that my children receive instruction in subjects not often emphasized, like science, social studies, gym, geography, technology, art, music, library, and foreign language, yet not all of these are funded by Suter or by CPS Central Office. Suter's music program is entirely underwritten by Suter PTA. Suter's library program is run completely by parent volunteers, and Suter's foreign language program is only offered after school for a costly fee. Basic youth education must include meaningful exposure to what are wrongfully titled auxiliary courses. Our kids are in school thirty-five hours a week, more than enough time to provide instruction in auxiliary courses. The only element not supplied is sufficient funding. This is the first year the Suter PTA is struggling to fund the music program due to the addition of our first eighth-grade class. The parents spearheading the Suter library curriculum and instruction will likely not be at the school next year, and the Suter community has no idea who will continue her work. In previous years, Suter provided Mandarin as part of the school day, but due to lack of funding, was forced to end the program. No student or school should be left in this position. We should be able to seamlessly conclude the basic programming offered our children regardless of exterior donations of time and money. The board requests all schools implement daily gym and two hours of arts instruction each week. Under the current funding structure, Suter cannot fulfill this requirement. This policy will only work if there is true financial support behind it. An increase in per pupil funding is necessary to offer the robust education all Chicago students and the city deserve. The future of Suter and the future of the city of Chicago depend on your commitment to fully invest in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Again, my name is Rhoda Riegechares, and I'm a parent of two students at Coonley Elementary, a member of Parents for Teachers, and a proud opt-out parent. I'm here to express my deep gratitude and solidarity with the teachers and families from Salsedo and Drummond who boycotted the obsolete ISAT exam. Again, I want to repeat that. I am here to express my deep gratitude and solidarity with the teachers from Salsedo and Drummond who boycotted the obsolete ISAT exam. Now, here's why. These tests, these high-stakes standardized tests, simply take away precious time from teaching and learning, period. But more tragically, they are used to label our children and schools as failures and used to justify school closings, turnarounds, and other school actions overwhelmingly impacting African-American and Latino children. That is tragic. But I want to tell you a little story about why I think this ISAT resistance is so important. So recently, I helped my son with this project in his classroom, and it's a wonderful project. It's called the Hero Project, where they profile historic figures. And I asked him who he was interested in researching, and he started naming some historic figures that his class read about. And one of these heroes was Rosa Parks. And I asked him what she did. And as a first grader, he was like, oh, well, he said she refused to move to the back of the bus, and he helped African-Americans. I'm great, I was happy that he was able to say that, but I had more to add to that. And I told him that she did not just do that act spontaneously. She was a trained organizer at the Highlander Center. She was a secretary of the local chapter of NAACP in Montgomery.
Ms. Riegechares?
She planned that action, yes.
Can you please conclude?
I will, thank you.
Thank you.
She planned that action on that bus and took great personal risk to challenge unjust racist practices and policies. I see this ISAT boycott as part of the strong civil rights legacy. If our unelected board will not take action to reduce the misuse and abuse of high-stakes tests, those who are closest to our children, parents and teachers, must act with purpose and social justice principles.
Thank you, Ms. Riegechares.
And sometimes that means breaking laws.
Thank you, Ms. Riegechares. Our next speaker, please. Zorlina Smith.
My name is Zorlina Smith. I'm a parent of an early Head Start child. I am here today, and I wish that you would give me the respect that I would have my five-year-old give you by looking up and paying attention to what I'm saying when I'm speaking to you. I am a LSC member. I'm the chairperson of the Early Childhood PAC Committee. I volunteer dig, dip, I can't even say it, I'm so angry. I'm just gonna go here. What I see right now, what you're doing, I am a block club president for three blocks in the Austin community. I transferred my daughter from Oscar de Priest Elementary School last year because it was one of the schools on the list to be closed. Emmett Elementary School was also on that list to be closed. It was closed last year. As we walk to a bus stop, we have no stores. We have very little resources or anything already in our community. When you look for playgrounds for a toddler to have something to do, it's sitting in a vacant school lot where kids used to play at. When you sit here and you think about the future, the generation for the next kids, don't just make it for the rich, make it for the poor. Because my property taxes, I am a homeowner living on fifteen hundred dollars a month. My property taxes went, my house insurance and property, everything is included, from seven twenty-nine to eight sixty-nine, okay? That takes away from the resources that I can provide for my child and my household, for schools that are not in our community. When you look at what's going on with the turnarounds, with the opting out, with everything that's attacking the African-American communities, I'm out here as a parent concerned for our children, the poor children that nobody thinks about. This is something that I know is gonna be a lifelong fight for me, and I don't want my daughter, because I have, the only thing that I can give my daughter is to make sure if I can pay my lights and gas bill, a gas to get her to school, because she's twenty-four hundred south and I'm fifty-three hundred west, okay? When the selected enrollment time came out, I had the information, I researched it, I used it.
Ms. Smith?
I picked all the best schools that I could but was not in my community. Why is that? Why is that? We deserve everything that the rich deserve. We don't want turnarounds. I, not racist, but I should not have my child in a school where there's no African-American teachers at.
Ms. Smith, thank you.
Just think about the future generations and every decision that you make. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Our next speaker, please, Sean Gouda.
I'd like to start off by saying good morning. I was here for the January's meeting. I'm the guy that said I've been coming here for a span of three decades, and evidently my problem in January was not addressed, so I'm back again. I want you all to know that every odd month, I would be here until my problem is served, I mean, solved. So look forward to seeing me unless you solve my problem. I came here in January's meeting for a couple of reasons. Let me start off with one of the reasons, because of Ms. Barbara Bird Bennett. I am, I want to thank you for bringing the Black Studies Program to CPS that someone before you should have done. So thank you for coming from Detroit and Cleveland to bring something that was here that was not implemented. Thank you very much. Also, when I was here, I brought a list of books. But let me tell you the main reason why I'm here today, is that I submitted a Freedom of Information Act request to Claire Barton School. I CC Ms. Kirby, who is the chief network officer, and I CC Jose Villasenor, I CC Ms. Daniels. That was back in January. Here we are in the March. I have not heard a word, other than did anybody call you or did anyone send you anything? And my response was I hadn't heard anything from anyone, and I had not received anything. When I came to the board meeting in January, I asked you all, did you all have a copy of my list of concerns? The president said he did. I have not heard a word or have received any written documents about any of the concerns that I addressed in January. Now, if I am to be a fair man that I am, I've been coming here for a long time, and this has got to be the worst that I've ever been treated. The best was when Michael Scott was here. At least when Michael Scott, when I addressed something to him, at least he sent somebody to talk to me to find out what my concerns were and dealt with them.
Mr. Gouda?
Here, I can't even, yes, ma'am, I understand.
Thank you.
Here, I can't even get a response to something that I put in writing to give to you all. So my name is Mr. Gouda, don't forget, because I will be back. Thank you.
Our next speaker, please. Speaker number fifteen.
Mr. Gouda. Mr. Gouda. Would you please talk to Ms. Sullen there? I am aware of this, and I think there's some missing information, but if you would touch bases with her. She's in the pink top. This should be resolved very quickly.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Speaker number fifteen, Rennie Williamson, followed by Speaker seventeen, John Peskis, followed by Speaker eighteen, Joel Monarch, and then Speaker number twenty-four, please, Christina Torres.
Good morning. My name is Rennie Williamson, and I'm a first grader, and I have a first grader who attends Revis Elementary Math and Science School. I also serve as a parent representative on the LSC Board for Revis. Revis is a neighborhood school, and I'm glad that it is located near my family. The principal is doing a great job, fantastic job, in managing the school, and my son's teacher is equally committed to making sure her students are doing their best academically and socially a hundred percent of the time. Revis lost three hundred fifty thousand dollars in funding for the 2013 through 2014 school year. Due to these dramatic budget cuts, our library has not opened for book circulation this entire year. We have no librarian. My son had PE on five days each week at the beginning of the school year. Now he is down to four days per week. We have lost our art teacher and music program. We have neither a functioning science lab nor a math specialist, and these curriculums are stated in our school title. We are also lacking wraparound services and have zero funding for restorative justice. Today, I am asking for an increase in per pupil funding for all schools in the district. The future of Revis Elementary, Math and Science School, and the future of Chicago depend on our investment in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please, John Peskis.
It's a pleasure to be here. And, Mr. John Peskis, there are two handouts. Sixteen-year teaching veteran with CPS, nine years, science teacher, excellent rating, good letter from the principal that you got. I was laid off, six years as a substitute teacher. Then, one day, unfortunate incident, I had nothing to do, sitting off to the side in a classroom, dark basement classroom, while pre-k kids were being worked with by the assistant, and I was accused of falling asleep in class. It was reported, and I was terminated. Now, how could this be? Now, I'm a very conscientious person. I would never sleep on the job. I wouldn't even imagine doing such a thing. I was shocked. I went to have myself medically checked out, and it turned out I have sleep apnea. Sleep apnea is a sleeping disorder which can cause one to fall asleep during the daytime, usually when they're not engaged. I was not engaged with the kids, you know, sitting on the side with nothing to do. And I have now have fully corrected. Second letter from my doctor, a world-class sleep specialist, testified, he knows what he's talking about, that I'm completely safe to return to work, and that no workplace accommodation of any kind is necessary. I even spent the money to pass the maintenance of wakefulness test, the same test used to verify the safety of pilots and professional drivers. If it is good enough to trust a driver or pilot will not fall asleep on the job and cause a serious accident and kill somebody, then certainly it is good enough to trust a teacher in the classroom. Despite this, the Department of Employee Engagement repeatedly refuses to take the do not hire designation off my file. Now, even a couple of principals that made requests have also been refused. Now, teacher commits a crime, teacher commits crimes should never be allowed to work for CPS again. Somebody like me with corrected condition should. Please, for goodness sake, take my name off the do not hire designation.
Our next speaker, please. Speaker number eighteen, Joel Monarch.
My name is Christina Torres. Members of the board, Ms. Barbara Bird Bennett, and those in the audience, I am here on behalf of Ames Middle School. Yesterday, Ames students participated in a youth orchestra and are holding another event April third at the Ames campus. We are extending an invitation to all of the board members to come out and see what Ames has to offer and have a one-on-one with Ames students and get their perspective. For months, Mr. Vitale, you told parents that the board needed proof of what the community wanted. Well, during last week's election, a referendum was put on the ballot in eight precincts within three wards surrounding Ames Middle School, and the results have shown that an astounding sixty-nine percent of verified voters voted in favor to keep Ames as a community school which is open to all students rather than being converted to a military academy. The alderman, the alderman sent mailers, made robocalls, and distributed palm cards. He even recruited Marine students during class time to come and door knock in our community. You can find pictures in your packets of those students doing door knocking in our community. Again, sixty-nine percent of voters voted yes to keep Ames as is, and yes, again, despite Alderman Maldonado's failed attempt to intimidate voters. The Ames community is made up of immigrant families coming from all parts of Central and South America, where there, the military is considered the enemy. How will, how will they feel seeing over a thousand Marine cadets in camouflage uniform walking through their neighborhood, my neighborhood, on a daily basis?
Ms. Torres, excuse me. Can you please conclude?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I am here today to ask the board members and Mr. Vitale to please change your vote and find another facility to house Marine Academy, and that list is also in your package of options for schools.
Thank you, Ms. Torres.
Finally, listen to the democracy of what they're asking for and leave Ames alone and no military at Ames.
Our next speaker, please, Joel Monarch.
Mr. President, Mr. Vice President, members of the board, Ms. Bird Bennett, members of CPS management team, I'm Joel Monarch. I'm the lawyer that put the referendum together that the voters in the eight precincts voted on and worked with them in the campaign. I would ask the board to consider, you voted five to two to convert Ames to a military academy on December eighteenth. If the evidence of this referendum, which is new evidence, a three oh eight to one forty-one vote was before you on December eighteenth, would your vote have been the same? My understanding is that the will of the public that was presented to you, we feel somewhat misleadingly, played a part in your decision. And for that reason, we, as a remedy, are asking you to reconsider that decision, place it on the calendar for April, and have another vote. I'd like to just say that over the four months that I've been involved in this, I've had a chance to visit Ames, and we do extend that invitation to you, because Ames is a community, Ames School has many parent volunteers, mentors, tutors, after-school programs. I went to Oak Park High School. I know good schools. It has a suburban feel to it, that if you go out and visit Ames, you will see. I think it's the kind of school that CPS should want to replicate, not, you don't want to weed out a good school like this to accommodate another school. There's room for military academies. We would be happy to help Alderman Maldonado find another site, but we would like Ames to remain a middle school. I would also call your attention in your packets, Alderman Moreno versus Ward, Eddie Reyes, county commissioner, and State Senator Willie Delgado also oppose the conversion. And please reconsider and save Ames. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please, will be Speaker number twenty-six, Okema Lewis, followed by Speaker twenty-eight, George Blakemore, Speaker twenty-nine, Patricia Valentine, and then Speaker thirty, please, Janine Oskura Stanisowski. Okema Lewis, please.
Good morning, board members, community parents, staff, and all public present. On the premise shared today, that it is a core priority of the district to support the engagement and empowerment of families and communities, I have serious concerns to address that are in conflict with this core priority. I'll get right to the point. Title I dollars bring in funding because of low-income parents. Your policy and the documents that you are just receiving, which in fairness, you cannot reference yet, but you will have them soon, you have a reimbursement policy for parents who attend a conference to empower them to work with you as a partner, with their teachers, and with their children. When they attend these conferences, they have to come up with the money for their food out of their pockets because of a policy that came into place because the district got cited for not being held accountable. Let me reference a letter sent from a department staff person whose name you see before you. Unfortunately, the practice of providing cash advances is on the first page, highlighted in green and/or yellow. The practice of providing cash advances to parents was discontinued as a matter of district policy in 2010. The change was made due to the lack of accountability on the part of the school for funds provided and advanced to parents, and due to the federal government citing the district because of a lack of accountability. Why should parents be punished? Revise your policy on their behalf, and in noting that that is what you do regularly. You change your policies to meet the need. That being said, look again at the second page, from also a staff person, telling them that they could get no cash advances, it's a district policy, but the principal has the autonomy and final approval authority at their school for parent involvement funds. Therefore, whatever decision they make, remember, they're the person held accountable. So some principals do it and some don't.
Ms. Lewis, excuse me. Can you please conclude?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
It's very important that you note the attached copies are your current policies. One from 2012, which said cash advance could be provided, but the policy was created in 2010. The next one says that a reimbursement, no cash advance to parents, August first, 2013. And the last one, August first, 2013, says that, yes, they can have cash advances. This is creating a lot of confusion. Parents don't have the money to pay for food upfront if they didn't have it for rent and light and gas, and they gave the district those lunch forms and it said you would get money.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis.
I thank you very much. Mr. Baldwin has went. He has not received his reimbursement. I would like some support and some attention to this matter as you have been given your documentation and not ours. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Our next speaker, please. Speaker twenty-eight, George Blakemore.
Black labor, white wealth. Schools, the miss.
Schools, the miseducation of black children, jobs, goods, and services. When they are not in the black community, the black schools are ineffective. They're not good schools. People have multiple problems. Number one, they not working. This country was built not by Hispanics, Asians, white slave labor, but black slave labor. And we want to get all the jobs, goods, and services in schools that everything afford above in the city of Chicago. You are appointed by elected officials, and some of you black ones sell your people out. Your elected officials sell you out. We have to go back to black people, go back to the old school, picketed and marching and hauling and demanding quality education in the black schools. All right then. You heard it loud and you heard it clear. We are entitled to that, and some of you black ones sitting here are perpetrating black leadership. Perpetrating black leadership.